At this time, I would like to call to order the Tuesday, April the 4th, 2023, School Board Meeting of Lynchburg City Schools. And we want to thank everyone who is here with us in person, as well as those who are viewing us through our various means of broadcasting tonight's meeting. I would like to begin with A, which is our call to order. And as we move to B, which is our general approval for tonight, we do want to make sure that everyone is aware that in City Hall tonight, there is a public hearing. On that public hearing, there will be an opportunity to speak to the budget. And there is a strong desire that maybe our presence could be felt best there if we can dispatch of what we're doing tonight with substance, but also to keep our comments centered, salient, and crucial to the conversation at hand. We could be able to accomplish that as well as tonight's meeting. And so with that in mind, Board, we don't typically do this. I am going to ask the superintendent to give any potential recommendations for us to amend the agenda for tonight in light of what I just said. Dr. Edwards?
Certainly. So we have a lot of guests here and our students here, and we are definitely going to make time for them tonight, so we are going to keep that. But in an effort to really get us so that we can attend the City Council meeting, I suggest that our Section I, which is our School Board Member Reports, that we postpone any reports tonight and move those to our May meeting. So in May, you can do double duty. I also recommend that under Section J, we have a couple items of unfinished business. Number one is to talk about the operating budget, which is the matter at hand at City. But number two and number three, three being the spring board retreat and two being the discussion about the MOU, I'm suggesting that we actually do those on our spring retreat, which is April 18th. So we can move our unfinished business items to the April 18th agenda. Would like to continue with the new business and just accept those donations. And then my comments under Section L and School Board Member Comments under Section M, if we could hold those until our regular meeting in May. I think that might afford us enough time to celebrate with all of the wonderful people who are here, but also do the business of the board and join the City Council meeting tonight.
All right, Dr. Edwards, you did a fine job with that. But can you just give me those one more time than what you just said?
Sure. It's a test. So we are postponing Section I. So I, 1 through 8, will be postponed until the May meeting.
Okay.
Section J, 1 through 3, will be on the April 18th work session. Section L, 1 and M, 1, both comments by myself and the board, we will have at the May 2nd meeting.
What about G, like George?
The Committee Reports.
Oh, the Finance Report. We can also, if the board willing, we can move G, 1 into our May meeting and kind of do two months' worth of Finance Report and Health Insurance Summary as well.
And the portion of the Committee Report, each committee?
Yeah, I did that. That was under Section, where is that? I, all of I.
Postponed, okay.
All of I. So it just means we're going to have fun in May because we'll be doing two months' worth of stuff, but it's worth it to make time to celebrate.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Dr. Gupta and seconded by Dr. Carter that the amendments that were proposed, I, 1 through 8, would be moved, J, 1 through 3, L, 1 and M, 1, and even G, 1, if it comes earlier, would be moved. Any board member at this time has a right to suggest that they would like something to remain. There is a motion on the floor. Any questions or discussion? All right, here ain't none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Trost.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
All right, so that motion passed. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very, very much. Yes.
My motion passed after a very long time.
Oh, wow.
Hope you'll do some celebration.
Dr. Gupta, you, all of you, we thank all of you for your motions. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. All right, at this time, we will now move to Section C of our agenda for a special presentation. And we've got a couple of those, a few of those. So we're going to start first with our 2023 Excellence in Science. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, and we are excited. It's one of my favorite times of the year. I'm going to invite Dawn Wise, who is the Education Foundation Executive Director, up to talk about this special award and a surprise honor to one of our students.
It's so exciting. Thank you. Chairperson Coleman, Vice Chair Brennan, and School Board Members, good evening. My name is Dawn Wise, and I am the Executive Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. It is an honor to come before you this evening and announce the 2022-2023 Recipient of the Excellence in Science Scholarship, which is awarded to the top senior science student as determined by a comprehensive application process. As determined by the requirements, the student should be someone with outstanding grades in science and engineering-related courses, who demonstrates a deep passion for science or engineering, who has created and mastered available science and engineering opportunities, and who has a strong science or engineering vision for the future. The application process is rigorous and includes a written application, letter of interest, three letters of recommendation, an official transcript, three essays to help gain application insight. And from this scoring process, the applicant pool is narrowed down to five finalists, who then complete an interview with the Excellence in Science Scholarship Selection Committee, where all candidates were asked an established set, blind set of questions. A side note that I have to share, one of the questions we asked this year were, "Who are your science role models?" And four out of the five students all said they're science teachers, which is really sweet. A little bit of, I know. A little bit about the history of the Excellence in Science Scholarship. In the fall of 2013, Dr. Charles Pryor and his family announced a $25,000 scholarship to be awarded every school year for four consecutive years to an outstanding senior interested in entering a science-related field of study because Dr. Pryor had a vision, a hope, that this science scholarship would make Lynchburg City Schools unique because there were no similar flagship science scholarships being offered in any other division in the state of Virginia. Dr. Pryor has a long history of valuing and supporting public education and understands the important role that strong schools play in the success of our students and the economic health of our community. He is a graduate of both EC Glass High School and Virginia Tech and spent 25 years with the Babcock and Wilcox Company, serving as the President of the Nuclear and Power Division. While in Lynchburg, Dr. Pryor served as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board and Chairman of Lynchburg City Schools Partners in Education. This time, I would like to welcome Charlie to speak a little more about the scholarship.
Members of the School Board, thank you very much for your service. Since 2013, when we started this program, I can't tell you how pleased I am with the way it's evolved and the wonderful students that have benefited from this scholarship over that time. Our first winner was a student named Sam Fettler, who ended up being the valedictorian of NC State University.
Oh, wow.
Not just the head of the engineering class, but the head of the whole school.
Wow.
So that's the kind of student we are encouraging here. So just briefly, I want to thank Dawn Wise, who filled in for Jody Gillette, so that wasn't an easy task to do. She's done a marvelous job, and Maria Jaeger and others in the school system who make this program happen. I feel that investing in our youth, I can't think of anything more important to invest in than the youth of this community. And this program emphasizing excellence in science sort of elevates that goal a little bit in terms of the investment. And my thought was, maybe one day, we'll actually have a Steven Jobs come back here and set up an Apple company in Lynchburg, Virginia. And I don't know how many of them intend to come back and make a career in Lynchburg, but I hope some of them will do that. But that was the whole thinking behind the program. And I just can't tell you how proud I am that it's evolved the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. He is a joy to work with, by the way. So privileged to be able to work with people like him. Scholarships clearly benefit the student recipients, as awarded funds ease the financial burden of an advanced education and create room for students to take advantage of often unpaid research and intern positions that contribute to their educational experience and professional development. But a scholarship such as this benefits more than just the student recipient. Lynchburg continues to grow as a national leader in nuclear engineering and a regional leader in medicine. Our community is also an incubator for entrepreneurship and host many engineering and manufacturing firms, all of whom rely on a workforce that offers strong math and science skills. In order to be a thriving community and support these industries, it is essential that we maintain strong public schools to cultivate and attract new employers and retain top employees. As was mentioned before, the Excellence in Science Scholarship is a unique offering not often seen in public school settings, and is designed to work toward this goal. It would not be possible without the vision, extreme generosity, and commitment from our sponsors. Lynchburg City Schools and the Education Foundation would like to take this opportunity to recognize and extend our most sincere support, appreciation to the following sponsors for the opportunities they are extending to our students and the prestige that they are bringing to our school division. BWX Technologies, Framatome, DTE Energy Foundation, Mr. and Mrs. Lee and Sharon Ainsley, Dr. and Mrs. David and Judy France, and Dr. and Mrs. Charlie and Mary Jane Pryor. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Now, on to our recipient. I do want to state that the applicant pool was exceptional this year, and all of the students who applied were outstanding candidates with a passion for science or engineering, each in their own way, and have very bright futures ahead of them. Lynchburg City Schools should be proud of the incredible students that public education has produced in this graduating class. So, who best meets the profile of an Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient? This year's recipient is an outstanding graduating senior from EC Glass High School and also is enrolled in the Early College Program at Central Virginia Community College, where he is on staff at the Math Achievement Learning Lab, helping tutor students there. I could go on and on about the academic record and his academic record and accomplishments, including near-perfect SAT scores and science experiments with 300-plus samples that he did for fun. But to best know why he was chosen, I would like to quote from his application essay, because you will be able to get a glimpse of what we saw, what struck the Excellence in Science Committee during his interview. "It was his pure, unadulterated love of biology." He writes it as if it's poetry.[1411.01][1411.01]"I dream of learning about the processes that guide our natural world. I wish to learn about wetland ecosystems and the reptiles and aquatic birds that flourish in them." I'm going to try not to cry. It's so beautiful, okay? "Desert ecosystems and the hardy, brittle animals tailored to the hot conditions, ancient ecosystems and the creatures of old that grew to colossal sizes, and city ecosystems and the tiny animals that live among the perils of humanity's creations. I believe that biology is the key to solving many environmental problems in our current world, such as viral epidemics, species extinction, and habitat loss. When looking at a broader vision of my future, I know that I would like to become a scientific researcher in the field of biology, but I'm not sure what field I would like to dedicate my life. All fields spark wonder and a burning passion in my heart." He goes on, talking about the hopes for his academic and his professional career, but then takes it one step further. Okay, sorry. "When I look toward my elder phase in life, I see a weathered man, a man weathered by time, yet still proud and happy with what he has done. I, using this inspiration, hope to contribute to the field of science by making discoveries. If any one thing could sum up my personality, it would be a certain love for life, a love for all life on earth." I truly believe that this scholarship would help me continue this love. I know, isn't it? This year's LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient embodies the very essence of what this scholarship was designed to honor. It is indeed my privilege to announce the 2023 LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient, Mr. Sage Karana.
I'm so glad she read through that because I was following you, thinking if she starts crying, I have to read. And then I started crying, like, oh, my goodness. It is such an honor to stand here as your superintendent and just be a part of this special moment. This is what we're all about, right? And we're not rushing this moment. We are not rushing this moment. We are so extremely proud of you. We're excited about what you're going to do. You've given us inspiration. I love anybody who can combine poetry and biology, right? That's what it really is all about. So congratulations. We wish you well, and you have the opportunity to say anything that you would like to say. Don't be nervous, though.
I'll try. That's a very difficult task. Hello, School Board. I've actually met a few of you through Professor Nagy's class. I know a couple of you know him, Mr. Trost, Dr. Brennan, Dr. Senha, and Dr. Day. I believe I've met you four, and I must say, it was really fun meeting you guys through that class. And of course, that was more politics and not science. But I did just want to say thank you for coming into that class and not. I've been obsessed with science ever since I was very, very young. I mentioned it in my essay, that when I was very young, I got a stuffed animal that I named Egg. It was a tyrannodon, a flying reptile from the time of the dinosaurs. And naturally, that exploded into something that I never thought would grow this large. I love, it started with dinosaurs. I watched documentaries, series, YouTube videos, DVDs. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but Walking with Dinosaurs is one of my favorites. There's also Walking with Monsters and a lot of others. But it soon grew to all animals, more biology, especially through high school, and the opportunities provided there, such as he no longer works at EC Glass, but Mr. Garnett was really influential. And especially during my junior year, Dr. Rhodes at CBCC, Dr. Tim Rhodes, he was very influential and heavily sparking how much I love science and biology. And it isn't just biology. I love geology and many aspects of science, too, and I truly hope I can accomplish something. I mentioned in my interview what I would specifically like to be. I would like to be the backbone of the scientific community. I want to go into research. I want to provide the numbers, the data. I want to do the, as I put it, the nitty-gritty work so that I can truly help everyone. Thank you.
All right, we want to take a picture with him, yeah. All right, boy. What an outstanding young man. Congratulations to you.
I'm so proud of you. Congratulations.
See you again.
He knows how to address himself and all of that. It's a tough young fella.
You did great. All right, Walt, there it is.
What a credit to Lynchburg City Schools, and we are so thankful for the Excellence in Science presentation. That now moves us to C2, where we want to give another special recognition. And I am so, so grateful to have the opportunity to read this certificate. Then I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards if she has any additional comments, and then we certainly want to recognize this powerful individual and the said church. Proclamation of appreciation. Whereas the Lynchburg City Schools Administration, School Board, Staff, and Students wishes to express appreciation to Pastor Chris Jordan and the West Lynchburg Baptist Church for the support provided to our division and community. Whereas the Lynchburg City Schools Administration and School Board recognizes the generous efforts made to assist our TC Miller Elementary School for Innovation students and staff during a time of need. Whereas the Lynchburg City Schools Administration and School Board are grateful to the congregation of West Lynchburg Baptist Church for opening their doors to provide a temporary location for our staff and students to ensure that the educating of our children was able to continue during the repairs to TC Miller. Whereas the Lynchburg City Schools Administration and School Board acknowledges the overwhelming kindness and care that was given to part of the Lynchburg community during a time of need. Whereas the Lynchburg City Schools Administration and School Board says, "Thank you for your efforts that afforded our staff to keep our students engaged and safe in an environment that was conducive to instruction and learning. Your partnership, commitment, and service to our community, along with the gifts of your time and resources, is appreciated and valued beyond measure." Now therefore, be it resolved on the fourth day of April 2023, that the Lynchburg City Schools Administration, School Board, Staff, and Students do hereby recognize and wholeheartedly say thank you to the West Lynchburg Baptist Church, signed by James Coleman, Board Chair, Crystal Edwards Superintendent.
So come on up there, yes. Thank you seems like just a small thing that we can say, but those were, those were dire times when we had several buildings that went offline due to pipes bursting during the wintertime. And we are just beyond grateful with your hospitality, your openness, your willingness to do bus duty, car duty, feed our staff. I mean, it was just so much love that our staff felt just coming from you. And it was, it was definitely at a time when we needed it, and it really showcased what this community is about. You know, sometimes we watch some television and we wonder what this community is about. That really showcased the, the way that we collaborate, come together, support one another, and are there. And you just did it out of the kindness of your heart and with love and your entire staff. Like, we didn't even want to leave to go back, but I mean, it was just, it was that, that's how welcome we felt, and our families felt it, and we appreciate you, we appreciate you. We have a small token of our appreciation, but also wanted to just give you an opportunity to, to say anything that you would like to say or share with our community as well.
And Dr. Edwards, before Pastor Jordan would share, I, I just, I just, I'm somewhat speechless, but I want to make sure that there's a connection. I remember spending some time with Pastor Jordan on a trip that we were on, and at that time, he was saying, "Anything I can do to be helpful to the community, to be helpful to the schools, I want to do it and where there's an opportunity." And then when I heard Dr. Edwards said this partnership had been established, it's so powerful. And I want to say to everybody else out there that's listening, that may want to make a connection to help us, Attorney Trust and others around the board with community engagement, thank you, sir, and thank you congregation.
Dr. Edwards, Dr. Coleman, the school board, and it's been a pleasure. I've been in Lynchburg for two and a half years, but I serve a church that's been in this community for 117 years. And so what took place there in January to take care of your school was built on the foundation of many years of trying to serve our community. And just, it was an amazing thing to see our church step up. Dr. Tad Harden, who is our Associate Pastor of Worship, who took on a full-time administrative role with the school and doing all of these things, thank you for your help. Tim Wilgus, who is our Family Pastor, stepped up. Blaine, who controlled the traffic, you know, donated his time, and so many people, not only within the walls of our congregation, but in the community, stepped up, said, "How can we help provide food for the, the teachers, just snacks, some words of encouragement, cards, letters?" All of these type of things took place. And I'll just say a great word about your staff from Dr. What was your, I can't remember how to say your name, Reed. I know Reed. So Reed and, and the principal and the entire staff of TC Miller are outstanding. What you've hired there and put together in this community is, I don't know all the other schools, but I know that one is an exceptional school that has done very well. Easy to partner with, easy to work with, because we are in our community for one reason. How can we better everything for everyone? Okay? We are driven as a church to glorify our Lord Jesus Christ, and even in the Old Testament, it gives us marching orders in Jeremiah. I just want to read a brief passage that I think is helpful, that drives us. Jeremiah 29:7, "Do good things for the city where I sent you. Pray to the Lord for the city where you are living, because if good things happen in the city, good things will happen for you also." We're here to pour into our city because we are living in this city, we are serving in this city, we are loving in the city, and we want to help lead in a servant attitude with anyone and everyone who's willing to partner. So thank you for the recognition, but it was our pleasure and honor to host our children from our community in our building. And if you ever need it again, I will say the kids prefer our soft cushion chairs over the hard chairs that are provided at TC Miller. But thank you again.
You all come up there, we want to give you this. Well, I'd also like to take a picture, please. All right, we want to thank Pastor Jordan and West Lynchburg Baptist Church. Absolutely outstanding. And now we come to the next item, which is three. And oh, how we celebrate Beacon of Hope. Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely. So hopefully, if you're watching and if you're here, you've come to realize that we can't do this work alone, that our school system thrives because of our partnerships with nonprofits, community leaders, philanthropists, and just people who just care about children. And nobody really cares about children as much as this next person, who I've had the pleasure of working with, who has done some phenomenal things to open doors for kids, putting Lynchburg on the map with some wonderful things that are unique to us, but now everybody's biting on them and trying, trying to do what we do. But I'd like to introduce Ms. Laura Hamilton to talk a little bit about Beacon of Hope and our partnership and the wonderful things that they do.
Thank you for those kind words. It's good to see you all, members of the school board, Superintendent Edwards, Dr. Coleman. It's been a little while. That pandemic got in the way of making visits and letting you all know what's going on. So we're just here, I know you all have a lot on the agenda, so I'm just going to give a brief update of what's happening in our world, so that, so that you all can be aware. We are fast and furious moving forward, just like Lynchburg City Schools. So for those of you that don't know Beacon of Hope, we are unique to Lynchburg City Schools. This is the only place that Beacon of Hope exists. We were launched in 2011 as an offshoot of this community's Dialogue on Race and Racism, which many of you participated in. This community said that none of our students' zip codes should determine how far that they can go in life, and we grabbed onto that, created a nonprofit, and the rest is history in motion. So we are, again, a nonprofit partner to the Lynchburg City Schools. We provide services kindergarten through 12th grade. The bread and butter, the meat and potatoes, who we really are, happens in the high schools. But in 2012 is when we opened our first Future Centers, and those exist at EC Glass and Heritage. And Dr. Edwards alluded, these, these are kind of the things that the rest of the world is now catching on to our little secret in Lynchburg. In 2019, we launched the very first Universal Promise Program in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And that's a lot of words to say that any student who graduates from Glass or Heritage can go on to college for free. And that's a big deal. It's a big deal in Virginia, and it's a pretty big deal nationally. And we did this really for the same reasons that Dr. Pryor and that group of amazing innovators created the Excellence in Science, that we want the city of Lynchburg to continue to attract the best and the brightest, and we want the city schools to continue to be the shining star of the city and this region. And I think together, we're doing a pretty good job. We inspire, we invest in young people, and we equip them to become anything that they want to be. So the Future Centers are non-prescriptive. They really are kind of the urgent care facility of what's happening in post-secondary everything. So credentialing, careers, moving towards diplomas, moving towards anything after high school, we take the handoff, help with the awareness, the access, and the affordability of getting kids on to whatever their next big thing is. These are the four verticals of Beacon of Hope. Our Kids to College Program, which took a pretty strong break during the pandemic, but has come back roaring in several of our elementary schools. This is awareness. This is getting students to think about what they want to be. And that program would not be possible without the incredible leadership of our elementary schools and the counselors therein. We've had several iterations to that curriculum that our counselors are responsible for. They look at it, they look at the standards of learning, they look at the DOE standards and make sure that Kids to College meets them. We have come in to do all sorts of different things, from college fairs for third graders to career fairs for fourth graders, to the VDOE fifth grade standards of All About Me that can carry on to students when they hit their, their middle schools running. Middle schools. So when, when we first opened the Future Centers in 2012, we recognized, as you all do, that ninth grade is too late to start really planning what you're going to do in 12th grade and beyond. And so we introduced, this is now, we're, in May, it'll be our ninth year doing the eighth grade college and career readiness symposium. And the short version of that is we schlep all 600, six, all 600 eighth graders in the system to one of our college campuses every year, and they spend three days as college students, thinking about what's next. And if you've been on some of our colleges, they're not big, so when we come on there, it is clear that we are coming on their campus. And this year, we'll be at University of Lynchburg. It's a really fantastic event. It really gets kids thinking differently as they make that tough transition from eighth to ninth grade. Middle School Heroes is a program that's post-pandemic coming back, and we nest near peers, so near in age, near in geography, our college-age students inside the classrooms, inside this middle schools, particularly at Sandusky this year, as significant others who are just there to create relationships, talk about their experience. All of those students qualify for federal work studies, so they come from generally economically disadvantaged backgrounds, so it's a really special connection that those college kids are making with our middle school students. And then the Future Centers. They are really extraordinarily incredible places. They are completely, and all of this, by the way, as we begin to talk about budgets, all of this is privately funded. 100% of the work that's happening is privately funded, save the incredible generosity of the school system to give us heat, lights, email addresses, and love in the system. So we operate those two Future Centers, one at Heritage and one at EC Glass, and they've been going 10 years strong. They are post-secondary readiness hubs that work in concert with an incredible school counseling staff who is doing their job and beyond. And so we are, we are the gravy on top of the work that they're doing, connecting students to whatever is beyond. And then the unique nature of what we do, you know, generally, the high school experiences end when students get that diploma and walk off the stage and wave goodbye to Glass and Heritage, but we get to take the football and keep going with our students. So through the Stay Close Go Far Scholarship, which is now a $9 million investment in students in our city schools, and growing, that program takes 200-plus students a year to Central Virginia Community College and five other Stay Close Go Far Partner Schools, the furthest of which is Longwood, the closest is next door over here at Lynchburg, University of Lynchburg. And it's really been an extraordinary program. We send 20 students a year on Commonwealth scholarships, which are $5,000 scholarships to schools within Virginia, and that's really special as well. And now we're launching some really exciting new programs alongside these scholarships. So I know, I'm kind of rushing through because I know you guys have big agendas, so you can keep rolling. Who, yeah, there we go. So those are the two scholarships that we offer. Free Community College, again, this is a last dollar scholarship, so any student who graduates from our city schools and is accepted to any of our local Stay Close Go Far Partners, as well as the Community College, is afforded Free Community College, or up to the equivalency $8,000 at one of our partner schools. So doing scholarships is hard. I mean, we just heard about what Sage just went through to do that Excellence in Science, and we recognize that it can become an equity issue. For our students who need those dollars the most, it's the time and the energy and all of the sweat it takes to apply for 15 different scholarships with 15 different applications, where you put your name and demographic information on each one. For those of you who have been through the college process recently, you'll be familiar with the Lynch, with the Common Scholarship Application. It's what you do. You do one, and kids just send it off to 20 different colleges, and you just do it once. For us, we created the Lynchburg Common Scholarship Application that mirrors that. That program takes folks with Dawn Wise's group, with the Ed Foundation, with the Rotary Club, with the Dunbar Legacy Scholarship, with Beacon of Hope Scholarships and others, and it puts it in one spot, much like the Common App, where kids can click, send, and send to multiple applicants at the same time. It's a work in progress, but we're excited about, about what we're creating. And then the football gets taken. And the football is, the quarterback carries the football, which is our incredible students, across the end line to ensure that we get our kids not just to, but through their college, career, or certification experience. So all of that is the work that we've been doing for the last 10 years. It's very exciting. We can go to the next slide. We now, at this moment, have more than 800 students in our scholarship universe. Every single one of those students is a Lynchburg City School student. We are not scholarshipsping kids from the counties, we're not scholarshipsping them elsewhere, they are all Lynchburg City School students. And currently, there's about $6 million that have been invested in those scholarships with another $3 million raised and more to come. Of those 800 students, we've got 400 who are currently enrolled in their process. We've got 81 graduates with another 110 graduates coming. We've got 81 graduates with another 110 graduates coming, and we have about 260 students who are in pause mode, and we're going to talk about those in just a second, but I'll keep rolling. This is a really cool program, and it may be my favorite program, truly, that Beacon of Hope has ever done. Last summer, at the request of some of our business partners, they said when they get students, or they get young people into their workforce, they're not prepared. They're not prepared to show up on day one and show up again on day two. And you hear this throughout the business community, that soft skills are the most important part. Hard skills can be learned, soft skills take time. And so last summer, we launched a pilot summer internship program. We launched it in about six weeks. We can just keep rolling through these slides because you'll see their pictures. It's an 80-hour program. We ended up with more than 80 applicants to the internship program. We seeded 34 students in 12 different businesses across this community, everything from Framatone to Central Health to Bank of the James, to Lynchburg Public Works, to the Academy Center of the Arts and beyond. The beautiful part of this program is that it was GPA-blind, meaning we had students from a 0.9 GPA to a 4.5 GPA, and 33 of those 34 students were wildly successful in the program. Every single business that participated came back, and we doubled the number of businesses to 22 current businesses and 80 students being placed this coming summer. This month-long internship taught students all about self-identity and their asset in the workplace, how to have conflict in a workplace, how to address an envelope, how to send a work email, how to have small talk, how to elevator pitch yourself, and all of the things that many adults maybe could use a hand on these days. And that leads us to the next project that I think you'll be interested in. This is the growth of, this is what Dr. Edwards alluded to. Beacon of Hope has just received last week a half a million dollar grant from the Growth and Opportunities Fund from the General Assembly. And our job is going to be to take those students who have paused in their pursuits and help reengage them into careers that promise upward mobility. That's the goal. The goal is students moving to places of upward mobility. We announced this initiative in partnership with a national group called National College Promise. They lead more than 400 communities with scholarship programs across the country, and the First Lady Jill Biden was really excited about this project and promises to come down here to have some conversations about it. We can keep rolling. All of these students you see up on stage, they are Lynchburg City School grads from 2014 to current. Some of them are paused, some of them have graduated and are now Fulbright Scholars, some of them are in the working world as functional adults, and some of them are kind of midway through their processes. And they all talked about the value that Lynchburg City Schools provided them as they made their journey through, and how Beacon of Hope and Lynchburg City Schools together helped prepare them to be not just contributing, but flourishing citizens. So as we move forward, part of that funding has created what we call a playbook for Future Centers. And so we launched two new Future Centers, no scholarships, just Future Centers, one at Amherst County High School and one at Alta Vista Combined High School. So in addition to our two Future Centers here at Glass and Heritage and the Future Center that we launched at Central Virginia Community College, and the five Future Centers that we helped launch a couple of years ago in Richmond, there are 10 functional Future Centers, all operating differently, all operating with different funding streams, all successfully helping to shepherd students onto their next place. So, yeah, it's pretty great. So I want to commend this school board for the foresight that you had 10 years ago when we first started talking about this project, because it is a strange thing in the world of schools. And for the persistence it took to pursue what we have, which is a school officials' agreement that allows us to operate within the schools and do the work that needs to be done. I want to commend you for your continued persistence in these conversations, because this is not easy. It's not easy to dig in and try to do this work together, and it's really been an extraordinary partnership together. The world is looking at us, and we're doing really great things here, and I think you should all pat yourselves on the back for your willingness to be innovative and try something different. And thanks for having us.
Laura Hamilton, I certainly want to thank you for, you're thanking us, but we want to thank you for the incredible work that you and your team provide. I am almost in tears as I remember, I'm probably the only person up here that was around when you just mentioned, and as Ray Cox and his family, that young man would have probably had a huge challenge trying to get forward in life, and now he's traveling all over the world and taking pictures at the White House and all of that because of Beacon of Hope. And so we want to salute you and your team. I don't know if board members have anything else to say, but we thank you.
I just want to also comment that this is part of a series we've done with Beacon of Hope, with Partners Education Foundation, to thank these partners who we have, who really just function solely for the benefit of Lynchburg City Schools. And we're so fortunate for their support and the support of businesses and other schools. So in general, I want to make that statement, but I also want to echo what Dr. Coleman has said, is that although Laura is very humble to thank the board and other people, you know, her team over the last 10 years has done a phenomenal thing. We have given them some space in the high schools, and they have brought back literally millions of dollars to our children to be successful. Every student by name I need and beyond was really, the Beacon of Hope follows that so well. So just want to thank Laura, your team, your board, everyone who just supports this project, does so great. Thank you so much.
All right, that now moves us to Section D of our agenda, which is the Comprehensive Strategic Plan. Dr. Edwards, can you share with us with that?
Absolutely. So I am actually going to turn it over to Dr. Wodoka for a quick introduction and discussion about where we are with our strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good afternoon, members of the board. I think it's appropriate that those three presentations came before us, just incredible vision that was seen by this community in the last several decades, and we hope to continue that with some of this work as we move forward. So one of the things we talk about is, of course, the most important thing we do as a school division is to put incredible teachers in front of our students. But of course, a very close second is to make sure that the learning environments for our students are as high-quality and as impactful as they possibly can be. And so for the last several years and a couple of different iterations, we've been working to develop a vision for what the future of our facilities in Lynchburg will be, our school facilities in Lynchburg will be. And as we've discussed a couple of times now, we have now hired MGT Consulting as a firm to help us not only understand what the conditions of our buildings are, but also what do we do in those buildings, and how do we craft a path forward in order to know what our facility should look like in the long run. So you will meet Dr. Richards, who will be standing up very shortly. Dr. Lance Richards is our project manager for MGT, happens to be here this week, meeting with city council members and school board members, as well as touring a number of our schools over the next couple of days, but I wanted to invite him here tonight just to say hello to you, and so you have a name and a face that we've been talking about for quite some time. So welcome, Dr. Richards.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I really wish I'd gone first, because I feel like I'm very anticlimactic to be up here at this point, so I'm personally very excited about the Beacon of Hope initiative that was shared and your students' awards and things. That's very exciting for me. MGT, we like to say we're school people here to help school people, and we're here about helping school communities make informed decisions and to gather information, and most importantly, to gather community information, so we can bring that back to you and bring back responsible, actionable items for your consideration. So we're here just to have your community share with us what their thoughts, what their ideas will be. Probably not too soon to go ahead and announce that we'll be back in May to do some community events, we're still kind of working through the parameters on those, but those will be active, engaged sessions where folks can come in, bring your smartphone or tablet, and you can vote and share your ideas live on the screen. And it's actually kind of fun, it's a little bit game showy, but, and we try to have, we try to make it enjoyable. We'll share some highlights and an overview of the facilities reports and kind of condense that information, so folks can have that as a ready reference as we go forward. But we're excited about the process. I also want to share, Monica Frye is with me as well, my colleague, she'll be participating as part of, you can stand up and wave. She's not going to stand. All right, I'll give you that. Will be a part of the process in these community events, so very excited about the process. Happy to be in Lynchburg today and to be able to kind of go through the facilities. I'm very excited to get into some of your facilities and just see some of the great things going on. A little background on me, I was a school superintendent until just last summer, and a teacher, elementary school principal, licensed bus driver, always kind of share that with people. So it's fun for me to go around, take a look at districts or divisions, and to be able to share in their excitement about the great things going on in the community. And just in my short time, because we had a project kicked off a few months back, and so I've been able to kind of look at your data, look at your facilities, taken just a 30,000-foot overview of your division, and there's a lot of great things going on here. And so it's exciting for us to be a part of that process and kind of help you perhaps reimagine or take a different vision going forward and be a little more purposeful in your facilities' decisions. All right. By the way, Reed's been great to work with and Kent White on the city side. Well, thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening.
All right, very impressive. Thank you so much, Dr. Wodoka and Dr. Edwards in that area. Now, probably the highlight of every meeting is our student representative comments, and we're delighted tonight to have with us Paramount Elementary School, and then, of course, after that, Cameron and Kalen will give their reports. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So if you're tuning in for the first time, one of the things that we started doing this year was inviting our little leaders to join us and share information about their schools. And we have been doing that all year since October, so we are excited tonight to have representatives from Paramount Elementary School. And those two representatives, I'm going to invite them up to the podium, are Aiden Scott and Isabella Latham.
Hi, my name is Isabella.
And my name is Aiden Scott. In math, we've learned about many things, including multiplication and simile plot.
And in reading, we've learned about I Survived and procedural attacks.
In science, we've learned about light and the rock cycle.
In social studies, we've also learned about the 20th century and women's suffrage.
We've done some cool technology projects such as making podcasts about famous black people in Black History Month and explored the three branches of government of VR.
In resource, we did things such as draw monsters and have the Pacer test.
I love Paramount because of recess and field day.
And I love Paramount because of my friends in Science and Literacy Night.
Yes, don't run away yet. Ms. Foster, I did not see you back there. So Principal Foster, can you please stand up? I did not see you back there. Principal Foster from Paramount.
Great job.
Yes, yes. So it's not easy standing up here facing us and speaking to us. It's even more unnerving to know that it's on TV, too, so which would be a fun thing when you go back and look at it. But part of the reason why we do this, and as you've seen all night long, the investment in our young people. Our young people have a voice, and as adults, we're responsible for listening to our children, and we need to invite them to the table to share with us, because this thing called education is for them. So that's why we make an effort to bring them in. We know sometimes that they're nervous, but that's okay, because we love them, we support them, and you only get better at things the more you do them. So I would like to honor these students who came tonight, Isabella and Aiden. I have a special gift for both of you for representing your school and just to say that we are extremely proud of you, and then we want to take a picture with you.
Wow. All right, let's give these young people a hand, their family.
All right, parents, this is a photo op. You're here, you need refrigerated cereal.
You see me, I can see you.
Great job.
Here we go.
Hold on, all that thought is, tens up, everybody smile.
No biology?
Thank you. I take it. We're in good shape with these young folk, I'm going to tell you right now. Wonderful. All right, is Cameron going to share tonight? Okay, all right, then we're going to go straight to Kaylin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I loved hearing everybody's speeches and stories today. Just reminds me of how grateful I am to be an LCS student, and I'm excited to tell you guys about what's been happening in Heritage. So congratulations to three of our marketing students at Heritage, Nishana, Essence, and Maya, who competed at the DECA State Leadership Conference last month in Virginia Beach. This is an exciting opportunity for our marketing students. At Heritage, we have many career tech classes that really prepare students for the workforce and can make them, you know, help them to become well-rounded before they move on into their jobs. So for National Honor Society, the National Honor Society has recently inducted members of the junior class, they did that this month. We're also going to be, some of the NHS members are going to be volunteering this Friday at the Laurel Regional Schools Prom. This is something that we did before COVID, and we're very, very excited to be able to go back to Laurel and work with them again. It's a great opportunity. Pioneer Theater and Glass Theater have been working on their joint production of the prom, which opens at the end of this month. This is another very exciting opportunity for students at both high schools. It's been a very long time since we've been able to do a combined show, and we are having a lot of fun, and we're really enjoying ourselves. This is an exciting and important show, and we're very excited to present it to Lynchburg as a combined force. Last month, I talked about Nisha, who was the regional winner for Forensics Poetry, and she has become the Virginia Class Three State Forensics Champion in Poetry, which is very, very exciting. We're very proud of her. Another exciting combined activity between Glass and Heritage was the Indoor Combined Percussion Group. Students from both high schools came together and competed at the indoor percussion competition. The team placed fifth overall out of the 12 teams that competed, and we're very proud of them as well. That's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kalen, for the fine work that you do. We're very proud of you. All right, at this time, we will now move to Section F, which is public comment. And if it would please the board, we are so used to this language that I usually read, and as I look here, all of the three presenters are familiar with the language, and so if someone stops me, I'm going to go ahead and call on the three people that I have in front of me. And first, if I have it right, Sonia Harding, if I have it wrong, please forgive me.
Hi. Do I just go and then it starts?
Yes.
All right. My name is Sonia Harding. I'm a parent of a five-year-old entering LCS this upcoming year and a stepparent to a child currently at LCS High School. In-person Lynchburg City Schools are not safe for queer, trans, and gender non-conforming students. The lack of adequate teacher funding and training leads to bullying going unchecked, both from other students and staff. While verbal abuse takes the lead, physical abuse from other students is also a portion of this. This is unacceptable and makes in-person schooling unsafe and inaccessible to many students. I understand that some students' caregivers contribute to this by teaching their children an emphasis on uniformity at the an emphasis on uniformity at the expense of community well-being. Freedom of self-expression is an inherent part of well-being, including gender expression. As the social construct of gender is constantly changing, there is no objectively right way to perform it. The act of policing it, per any group standards, does not belong in our schools or society and is discriminatory. As the in-person schools are not currently safe, I have heard that the Lynchburg Virtual Academy has proven safer for some students. While I appreciate that it exists as an option, Virtual Academy is not an equal educational experience for households who do not have the necessary support resources. Households that can support students through LVA often do so at the cost of their career and other commitments. Somewhat related, there is a simple, actionable way that LCS can support a wide variety of students. I'm fairly certain everyone knows at least a handful of people that go by a name other than their legal first name. Many of us know people who go by Jerry, Jeff, Nate, Liz, Beth, or Meg, some of whom feel very strongly about their nicknames being their proper name to use for them. Within Google Classrooms, there's a constant reminder of chosen names not being respected on assignments, exams, and the entire online environment. I believe it would benefit many students' feeling of well-being and engagement by having their chosen names respected within that school context. I ask that LCS provide an accessible way for students to directly request that their names be changed within the Google Classroom system, as it is a broadly-used classroom environment. Expecting caregiver permission for this would be a limiting factor that would have a greater impact on students within households whose caregivers have executive functioning issues or limited energy to dedicate to actions outside of baseline survival, not to mention abusive households. As it is, LCS in-person schooling is inaccessible to my youngest. The systematic discrimination and bullying of gender non-conforming queer and trans students is a large aspect of that. I have heard many stories directly from students in the system that experienced discrimination both from staff, teachers, and students. As long as I am able, I hope to keep her safe from environments like that. Can I make my final sentence?
You may go forward.
Okay. Teacher and staff training regarding LGBT students, as well as bullying intervention, could be a substantial part of making in-person LCS schools safer for students. The group's side-by-side is one organization that does that sort of training. I am hopeful that the board will be able to initiate that soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is representing a group, the Lynchburg Immigration Support Network, and Vicente Gonzalez. Welcome to come forward.
Hi, my name is Vicente Gonzalez. I'm queer and non-binary, and I'm a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools. And I'm here to speak on LCS's failure to protect queer and transgender students against bullying, harassment, and discrimination. We are continuing to pressure the school system to enforce its current anti-discrimination policy, which protects students, faculty, and staff from discrimination along the lines of sexual orientation and gender identity. We need to see this policy put into practice. We need a clear, outlined protocol which is accessible to all students when it comes to dealing with cases of discrimination and harassment. Without such, LCS is failing to ensure full access to academic success for its queer and transgender students. When you are afraid, you cannot learn. When you are deemed a disruption, you cannot thrive. When your identity is stigmatized, you cannot be a fully-integrated member of a community. We know that queer and transgender youth have higher rates of depression, substance abuse, houselessness, and even self-harm and suicide. We know that there is a national, state-by-state effort to push transgender people out of public life. We know that Governor Youngkin's 2022 model policies strive to deny transgender students equal access to public education. We know that there are members of city council who openly support measures which will dismantle protections for equity, diversity, and inclusion for Lynchburg City Schools. Queer people are organizing to fight back against these attacks on our community, and we need to see that same urgency from Lynchburg City Schools. Through advocacy for queer students, we can build a better school system for all students. We have to remember that students are being profoundly impacted by poverty, gentrification, and the housing crisis. We have to continue to address issues of racism and anti-blackness in our schools. We have to continue to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. We have to ensure full access for disabled students. We have to provide support for immigrants and undocumented youth. All of these issues are essential components in securing protections for queer and transgender students. We can demonstrate for our students that they have the capacity to imagine and create a better world. We can show our youth that in diversity, there is power. In inclusion, there is possibility. And in solidarity, there is hope. I urge the Lynchburg City School Administration to make the right decision. Our community is mobilizing, and we need you to move with us, not against us. Thank you.
Our last speaker, public speaker, will be Nicole Spanjenberger, and you may come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, School Board. My name's Nicole Spanjenberg. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a queer, disabled, social worker with an MSW and a special interest in working for and with LGBTQIA+ youth and adults. Today, I'm here asking you to prioritize developing training for staff and teachers. An anti-discrimination policy is nothing if it is not implemented effectively. I will again bring attention to urgent needs for change and provide examples of what this professional development needs to cover, this time as per the 2021 model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia's public schools. This is a critical time in both the city and the country to build in as many protections as possible before the seats on the school board shift and before any more danger in the form of state and national policy enter the conversation surrounding our students. Students, as well as us, are seeing news spread across the internet about adults in power making decisions attempting to eradicate transgender-ness, which can only be seen as attempts to eradicate transgender people. Polling shows that 85% of transgender and non-binary youth and 2/3 of all LGBTQ youth say that recent debates around anti-trans bills have negatively impacted their mental health. Research shows that transgender youth are at higher risk of suicide because of living with transphobia, trauma, discrimination, and other threats to their safety. A 2017 study by the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network found that 84% of transgender students and 70% of gender expansive students are bullied and harassed at school. There's a misunderstanding and lack of knowledge about their lives. When these students do not feel affirmed or safe, they cannot learn or participate effectively in school. We need to make sure school is a place that all students feel safe, queer students feel safe, black students feel safe, disabled students feel safe, undocumented students feel safe, where a queer, black, disabled, undocumented student can feel safe, without a threat to their lives, a threat of being removed from school, a threat of being sent down the school-to-prison pipeline. It's vital for students to have at least one trusted adult in their life. The role model effect is huge. For black students to have at least one black teacher dramatically improves the likelihood of them graduating high school and of attending college. At least one accepting adult reduces the risk of a suicide attempt for LGBTQ young people by 40%. If there was a medicine that reduced that percentage by 40%, it would be a miracle drug. We can get there if we provide staff in Lynchburg Public Schools with every opportunity to be that one accepting adult that makes a life-changing difference. The next step is training and professional development for everyone, staff, teachers, administration. I'm not asking you to reinvent the wheel. I'm asking you to pull from what has already been put forward today from the 2021 Model Policies for the Treatment of Transgender Students put forward by the Virginia Department of Education. The goal of this professional development is to make sure that everyone understands the rights of students to a safe learning environment, as well as the school board's expectations regarding the treatment of our students. The Virginia Department of Education recommends to cover these seven areas. Key LGBTQ+ terminology and the use of unbiased language. Challenges and barriers frequently faced by LGBTQ+ students, like implicit bias and discrimination. Federal and state laws and local school board policies and regulations relating to the rights of all students to a safe learning environment. This includes expectations relating to preventing, identifying, and responding to bullying. Students' right to privacy and why unauthorized disclosures may negatively impact the student's safety and well-being. Practices to create a safe, inclusive environment for all students, between students, their peers, and the school community. Knowledge of affirming resources for students and families outside of the school system. And strategies to engage parents and other stakeholders regarding an inclusive school community to affirm all students. These components can overlap and be a part of other professional development, or they could be an individual professional development topic themselves. The 2021 Model Policies also include over three pages of resources for school divisions. This can be found on the VDOE, V D O E, website, and I'll also be sending it to you for your convenience. For students and others listening today, you are not alone. We are here. Nothing will happen about us without us. If you're struggling today, the new helpline number is 988, and the text helpline number is 741741. We are here, we are queer, and we are not going to stop fighting for you. Thank you.
Thank all of you who have had a chance to speak during public comments in person. Madam Clerk, do we have any voicemail?
No, sir.
All right. So we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is going to take us, we want to move G1 to our next meeting. And the consent agenda, we do need to deal with that tonight. And so in Section 8, we have H1, minutes from the March 7, 2023 school board meeting, minutes from our public hearing on March 21st, minutes from our March 21st work session. We have the appropriate information for religious exemption, Human Resources Board report, Human Resources Addendum report, and Addendum 2, and our Special Education annual plan. And so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda if no one is pulling anything?
I have moved it.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further questions or discussions concerning the consent agenda? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Trost.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
And now Dr. Edwards is going to share with us some information.
Yes, so thank you all, School Board. In one of those addendums was the approval of Ms. Sherri Shepherd, who is going to be our new Chief Human Resources Officer, and we are excited to have her join us. She is coming to us from Mecklenburg County Public Schools. She's had three years of experience as a director in our neighbor, Mecklenburg County Public Schools, as well as over 20 years of director experience as an HR professional. We are really excited about her leadership and joining us. And just a reminder that Ms. Scott, who is our Director of HR, has chosen to step down, still stay in HR, and deliver the excellent service that she has been doing, just not in that leadership role. So Mrs. Shepherd will be taking over. She is SHRM certified, which is the Society for Human Resource Management Senior Certified Professional, as well as Senior Professional in Human Resource Management. And as you heard today, even with the presentation with excellence in science, the connection that our kids have to excellent teachers. And that starts with great leadership at the human resources level in recruiting wonderful talent, retaining the superb talent that we already have. Just to speak to some of the things that we heard in public comment, the importance of training for our staff moving forward. We do have wonderful training, but our HR department helps out with that. So we're excited to welcome Ms. Shepherd, and her start date will be May 30.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and we're excited about what that means for us. All right, as it relates now to Section I, we have moved that to our next meeting. And as it relates to Section J, we have moved those to our April 18th work session. And you're getting more information about the retreat will be coming forward. As it relates to K, we do need to take care of these matters under new business and so donation from Virginia Education Foundation. Dr. Edwards, you can go right ahead.
Yes, so we have done this in the past couple of years. This is where we've received all of our books for our blizzard of books that we have shared with our students who are in pre-K through high school. And the Virginia Education Foundation would like to continue to donate books to us. So 23, over 23,000 books valued at about $365,000. So the list of book titles, they've been grateful and given us the list of book titles is there. And per our board policy, need to let the board know that we are receiving such a high value, but very well-appreciated donation.
All right. So that's just for our information.
Information.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. We're very appreciative of that. And then likewise, if you could comment on the donation, second item.
Absolutely. So also, per policy, I'd just like to let the board know when we have wonderful community partners like we do in Terry Subaru, who is donating $3,000 to Bass Elementary in the form of Adopt a Classroom. And what that does is allow teachers, there are six teachers who are going to receive $500 worth of shopping money to go on Adopt a Classroom and pick out wonderful things for their classrooms. And again, we are grateful to Terry Subaru for their support of our teachers. Every little bit matters, and we just want to take time to acknowledge them right here. And again, this is for information.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. We appreciate that, and we so noted that for information. We are moving along so fast here. And so at this point, we are not going to have our superintendent comments. We'll save those until May 2nd, and likewise, the board comments. And you see all the informational items there that the board needs to be made aware of. We are looking forward to everybody having a good spring break, a robust April 18th meeting. And so you all can come and be ready to do some great work during that time period. You see our May 2nd meeting, the financing facilities, and the May work session. Now, board, in terms of Section, oh, I don't think we spoke to that earlier. But technically speaking, I think we can dispatch that by way of the telephone. But what is the pleasure of the board? Do you all understand what I'm saying?
No.
Okay. All right. There's a proposed closed meeting for us to just review what you already have in your possession, and that is the schedule for the evaluation, summative evaluation that we have to do for the superintendent.
You said we have the schedule in our possession?
Well, you were given in a previous, the dates.
In the far distant past.
And we just wanted to, yeah.
Wasn't this week. Okay.
We can just, we will skip that. All right, you all are doing well. Guess what? Needing a jury.